Good morning, everyone. Good morning and welcome to this meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Welcome to Van Nuys City Hall, everyone. Today is Friday, January 26, 2024. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the Council, and we're ready to begin today's meeting. Public comment will be taken today, both here in the council chambers and via teleconference. Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, DeLeon, Harris-Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavski. Twelve members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes of January 24, 2024.
Councilmember Lee moves. Councilmember McCosker seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember Park seconds, next.
Would you like?
Let's run through the agenda, please.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Grabner, oh, before you begin, Mr. Grabner, just to reiterate to those who are here today, we will be taking comment on agenda items. So if you signed up for general public comment, but you meant to speak about an agenda item, then that's fine, but if it's something relating to issues that are not on our agenda, we'll be taking those after we have a chance to vote on the agenda items. So you'll still be heard, but it'll go in that order. Andrew Grabner, go right ahead.
Glad you got that two-thirds vote to change or suspend the rules.
Stick to the agenda items, Mr. Grabner.
We have item two. So we have item two, naming intersection Diane Watson Way. Looks like maybe another way you could honor Diane Watson is by having some of her ideals and, you know, having maybe, I mean, I see like she opposed a war. Maybe you could call for a ceasefire. Looks like she, she had a, she was against racism and xenophobia. You've got a known racist sitting on your council. You could get rid of him. So there's all kinds of stuff you could do to honor Diane Watson in a really great way that you're not doing. Let's see, we have naming Wisseton Struthern Frank Machelli Square as an honor to his contributions to the youth of Los Angeles. Maybe you could also contribute to the youth of Los Angeles. You know, put some money toward, take some money away from the cops and put it towards youth programs. That would be a good thing to honor the, towards parks and such. That would be a good way to honor youth programs. Let's see, we have item eight. That's specifically targeting street repairs to make sure they're fixed for all the, all the rich celebrities coming for the 2028 Olympics while not fixing the other streets. That's from Kevin DeLeon and staffer B. So definitely vote no on anything DeLeon introduces. Let's see, here we go. Item 10. Gosh, this one's a mess. You've now ended up in a 206, let's see, it's a massive deficit because a $297 million deficit, it looks like, overspending because you're giving so much money to the cops for their, for their salary increases. And because of that, you're now, you're now eliminating vacant positions in other departments, things that actually help people so that you can fund this massive deficit that you've ended up in because you're just tossing money to the cops. That's how the cop, LAPD does not seem to be one of the departments affected by all these budget cuts. The deficit, the only deficit-proof department in the city, apparently. But yeah, you're in this massive deficit because of, because you keep throwing money towards the cops. It needs to stop. Let's get, and you're blaming like, you know, tourism, reduce tourism from China to try to reduce the impact. No on the grants for the cops.
Thank you. And before our next speaker comes up, first of all, there's going to be no shouting out by anybody in the audience. Any shouting out that causes a disruption to this meeting will lead to that person being excluded from the meeting.
What about all your staffers talking over the phone?
Mr. Kwan, I haven't called on you yet. So, so there will be no disruption of the meeting. That is the warning I'm going to give to everyone now. You will not disrupt this meeting, okay? So before Mr. Kwan begins his time, please call three more speakers to line up as well. Madam Clerk.
As Seymour Hersh, Mena Sova Carmen Melina, and Jill Sandra.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Kwan, go right ahead. What items would you like to speak on?
All of them.
Okay, go ahead. You'll have three minutes to speak on the agenda items.
I'm just waiting for the clock. It's a, it's a, the clock says zeros right now. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Morning, Groth. I'm glad they brought you out here and not to NIA. I want to just appreciate the fact that I can address all of these items here in Van Nuys City Hall. Thanks is owed to Imelda Padilla. Any of y'all could have gotten us here, but it takes a little bit of investment to actually get things through like this. For item number 10, I just find it remarkable that we're only having this kind of come-to-Jesus moment with our budget now, not with the last FSR, not when LAPD contracts were actually up in front of you. I want to address Josh Angroski's deleted tweets. Not the anti-Semitic ones, but during budget season last year, he said, "LAPD is getting less of the money we actually have full control over." Period. That got deleted. "The budget is fake. We won't hire 9,500 cops." Yeah, that, that just put the writing on the wall that when you approved that budget in the spring, you were prepaying your ability to get LAPD out of it because we all knew that their raises were coming through. I just want to note again, when we talk about public safety in LAPD, what is LAPD? And last time I had an interaction with LAPD, they asked me where I was going and if I was on probation or parole. When do I feel unsafe? It's in District One when I'm walking my dog in the neighborhood. A month after I adopted him, you know what I did? I bought a reflective leash. I bought some Adidas night jogger shoes that look silly as hell, absolutely tacky, just so I have something reflective on my feet. Still, I get hit almost once a month. What would it take to get a crosswalk in there over just south of Benner and Avenue 60? Three-way stop. But we're shoveling that shit to the cops. Item number 13, we're honoring Mayor Bradley, and I just, I really do appreciate Mayor Bradley. I don't know definitively. I think might be the best mayor we've had. You may or may not know, but at the end of his time as mayor, he had a little mini scandal. We discovered he was serving on the bank of, on the board of a bank and getting paid by them while we were doing business with them as a city. That was a mini scandal compared to what y'all have done. And what we found was, he actually didn't do anything illegal. So we needed to create comprehensive ethics reforms. We needed to create a conflict of interest code. We needed to create an ethics commission. We needed to go further than that and regulate big money in politics and create a public financing system. He did that shit. We got a commission report, and you know how long it took him? Two and a half months, not a year and a half to get something half-done. In those two and a half months, they had a dozen meetings. You brag about having a dozen meetings over a year. Don't compare to him. John Ferraro entrusted another member to chair that committee. Actually did personal outreach. Nothing compared to you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Alyssa Bernstein. I am the Assistant Director of American Jewish Committee, Los Angeles. I'm here to express AJC's support of item 11, which is particularly salient on the eve of Holocaust Remembrance Day. In recent years, and particularly since October 7th, we have seen a dramatic uptick in violent antisemitism at rallies, in people's homes, and outside their places of worship, which have become targets of hundreds of bomb threats across the country and in this very city. When I was young, I remember visiting a synagogue abroad and thinking, rather naively, that their level of security was superfluous. Today, I look at my community's places of worship, and I recognize just how vulnerable they are. LA's Jewish community has never had a greater need for protection, but we cannot do it alone. We require protection from our law enforcement officers, and this motion would offer them the resources to provide this vital protection. I urge you to vote in favor of this motion. Thank you.
I'm Catherine Schneider. I'm here to speak on number 11. Good morning. Honored to be here this morning. The dramatic increase in antisemitism and Islamophobic incidents is toxic to our society and shared values. Rising security costs and heightened fears threaten our ability to practice our faiths and meet the needs of our community. We are fortunate for your leadership, and I know that you are fully aware of all the statistics involving hate crimes and antisemitism. Jewish organizations are spending a growing percentage of their limited resources on security. Some estimates show that security costs have jumped 47% since October 7th. I urge you to take concrete steps forward to support this motion, and on behalf of the Jewish community, I want to express my gratitude for your leadership. Thank you.
Who'd you like to speak to?
We'll just say all items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Okay. So item 10 is really just another joke. We're funneling all of our money from things we need, services, support for unhoused resident populations, seniors, we're funneling it, to the police. This is sort of par for the course. Safety is important, but the data is pretty clear that police don't prevent crime. They show up after it happens. Funding police when people don't have things like healthcare, homes, food, education, only exacerbates issues. And the interesting thing about our police force, as with most city employees, is that they live outside of Los Angeles. So not only do they not live in the communities that they're policing, which is problematic, but they're getting a paycheck from Angelinos, and then they're taking that paycheck outside of the city to places like Santa Clarita, or Glendale, or other places where they have nice homes, and then those places get our, you know, well, they get property tax revenue and sales tax revenue, and they get the benefit of having other community members there. And that's a problem with the whole city. 60% of city employees don't live in the city. That maybe that should be a requirement so that the police actually have to look at their neighbors when they, and they should be walking beats too, but I digress. Number 12, I think is great. It's a little bit late. An eviction moratorium should have been included in the emergency order that we have about unhoused residents. I'm just, I'm hearing a lot of chatting from this end of the horseshoe, and it's kind of distracting, so if y'all could hush up a little, thank you.
That's not an agenda item, so stick to the agenda items. Thank you.
That's really rude that you don't let us chat, but you let them chat. It's just distracting. Thanks. So someone was up here saying, you know, "What about the seniors who don't have pensions that rely on passive income from their rental property? What about seniors who don't have pensions who are at threat of living on the street? We need to make sure everyone can stay in their homes, and it's disgusting the way the city prioritizes investor profits and return over the literal lives of people. There are six people dying on the streets every single night." And we, what helps is housing. So, you know, this is piecemeal. I guess we can, we'll take what we can get. But the e-rap funding was never for landlords. It was to keep people in their homes. It's just that landlords end up being the recipient of these funds because they own the property. It's just one of the many ways that the city funnels money from the working class into the owning class, so I'll see y'all for general comment.
Next speaker. This is your first warning, Ms. Bullinger. Please do not disrupt the meeting anymore.
The amendment was read in after I got a chance to speak. Do I get a chance to speak on that amendment?
So, Speaker, it's not your turn to speak?
Yeah.
Someone called Seymour Hersh, that's why I signed up as. So I was wondering, the amendment was read in after I commented. Am I allowed to speak on the comment, like, per bound act?
Your time to speak has been exhausted. Thank you. Your time to speak has been exhausted. Next speaker. Next speaker. Can we read more speakers?
Good morning, urgent virgin Brock Landers, Los Angeles private investigator. All open items, please. Hello?
You have three minutes.
Oh, thank you. To Lieutenant Colonel Sharp, thank you for your service. Reach out to Smoke and Scan, and we will pay to get your certificate framed like you have earned. I'm sorry they didn't treat you as well as they treat their bagmen. Number 10, maybe if we stop giving money to people that donate to your campaigns for work they don't do, we want to have such a big deficit. Maybe after the conviction today, you'll realize that you should be read in the city a little bit differently. Number 11, to the people from the Jewish community that are here talking about needing more police resources, you need to ask your council members why they let Scientology weaponize the LAPD while you genuinely need their resources. Dicky girl, what's up? Your profile pic is Leia, shine your gold bikini, and let me know when and where.
You gotta be on agenda items during this time, caller, or else we'll bring you back for the teleconference.
Oh, you can put me on hold now. I got my shot out to my, to my checks.
All right, so we'll, we'll maybe hear from you again in general public comment. Next caller.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Yes, my name is Jason, and I'm a Smoke and Scan viewer.
Which items would you like to speak on?
Let me speak to all available items, general public comment, and whatever else you want to throw in there, brother.
You got three minutes for agenda items only. Three minutes for agenda items.
That's mighty mighty, sir. Anyway, I think first off and foremost, we should probably, probably look at like, I think, you know, there's issues because I don't, I believe that, you know, Mr. Krikorian should have to get permission before he puts his mouth on another man's penis. I mean, you can't do that without consent because, you know, when you're doing things like that.
All right, let's go to the, let's go to the next caller. This person is not on an agenda item.
Hi, yes, roots on, and all available items, please.
You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Okay, so for number 10, about the city department, there was a homelessness committee meeting. It wasn't the most recent one. I think it was maybe the one before that I was listening to. And Monica Rodriguez prescribed allocating ongoing funding to house people permanently. She described it as a noose. And I've never heard her use that word or, or that phrase or, or that type of language when it was discussing about like how hiring more police. But that's committing to paying their pensions, their huge salaries, usually six figures or close to it, for their whole career. If she thinks that prescribing permanent housing, like funding for permanent housing is a noose, but not hiring more police is not, like, that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. We need to be funding permanent housing subsidies. And then for the amendment on item 12, the ULA amendment, like, there's this thing called rapid rehousing, right? And it's a homelessness solution, or it's also called time-limited subsidy. And it's being used as an interim, or it's called a permanent housing now because it has reclassified it in 2013. It used to be an interim housing. Now they let you consider it a permanent housing. But it is not a permanent housing. It's a temporary subsidy. And the subsidy would actually be really useful if it were applied to renters that were losing their homes, that they couldn't, that like they couldn't pay rent for a few months or something. There's a time when it would have been really useful for me, like, I maybe would have not been like homeless, I might have been able to get through my period of difficulty because it pays your rent for like a year, but it only pays, it tapers down. By the end of the year, you're paying full market rent again. So your rent actually increases by several hundred dollars every single month. And that's not appropriate for a homeless person or a chronically homeless person to have rent increases every month as soon as they move into housing. They usually end up homeless again, right? But the people who are facing homelessness that have been paying market rent, they would benefit from that sort of a subsidy, but it's not available to them. So we need to sort this out. We need to fund ongoing permanent subsidies for chronically homeless people, and we need to fund a time-limited subsidies for people who are facing homelessness.
Thank you. Next caller.
You're right here. I want to talk about goddamn items.
Which items are you speaking on?
All the motherfucking items.
You have three minutes, starting now.
Calling from the National Jose Luis Weezar Federal Corrections Center, y'all. Come now, let's talk about these fucking items. Let's talk about the rent moratorium. The rents are too goddamn high. You know, and I know it. But I got good news. Imelda Padilla wants to extend this moratorium indefinitely in her heart. Let's give her a hand. The problem is, is that her campaign developer handlers apparently disagree, so they will only make temporary shit out of this. And that's wrong, and I'm tired of it. Then we got to talk about layoffs, lazy, sleazy city employee. Like, strap that fella for example. There's a city employee. He was in federal court today trying to hang out Jose Weezar to his last dollar owed. What a fool. He should file that motherfucker right now. And I've been telling Marquezzi, he can't help you, fool. Strap that fella for example.
You gotta stay on topic, Mr. Spindler. You gotta get on agenda items.
Fine, I don't know about that name. I'm talking as a black man right now. So I will continue with the layoff and cutback of these fucking city employees. Try to fill your hole in your pocket budget. I have a solution to get your budget back up to date and simply put, why don't you sell more development projects to the Chinese? Let's give them a hand, na na. That's right, and let's do it above ball this time, folks. Make sure you fill out those 700 forms with those illegal gifts that, um, okay, Mel?
You gotta stay on topic, Mr. Spindler. This is not on topic.
Are you okay too, Mr. Price? Fill out that form, 700, don't be hideous.
All right, let's go to the next caller. Mr. Spindler's off-topic.
Hello, I'm Shaw from Canoga Park.
Which item would you like to speak to?
Item 13, you're, you're, I'm 13 and 10.
All right, you have two minutes.
Yeah, how you doing, Mark? Item 13, I am for Tom Bradley was a great mayor. We ought to honor Tom Bradley more often. I grew up with Tom Bradley. I was nine when he first got elected back in '73. He brought the Summer Olympics to town in '84. He did great things. I miss Tom Bradley. That's why I'm 13. Item 10 is we need to protect our Jewish people. We protect the churches and synagogues. I grew up with them. I know what it means to be attacked. It's not right. LA should do some, we should do something about that, our Jewish people. I grew up with them. Thank you. Come back for public comment.
Thank you. Next caller.
Yes, my name is Jason. I'm a Smoke and Scan viewer, and I like to second Mr. Daniel Guth's objection there because this is bullshit.
Next caller, please.
Hello?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Hello?
Go ahead.
This is Carol Channing. I would like to speak about Tom Bradley. Back in the '70s, me, Tom Bradley, and Mayor Sam Yordi had multiple threesomes high on cocaine. He was a great man. I really loved Tom Bradley. Too bad that I passed away because I would really like to have a good time with Brock Landers. Thank you.
Caller, please.
Caller, which items would you like to speak on?
I'd like to speak on the recently amended.
You've already spoken. Next speaker, please.
All right, so it's good, or at least, you know, look, doing a little bit more investigation on this stuff, but I mean, you know, it's just so ridiculous. I mean, you know, you're in such a deficit because you're just, you're just tossing money towards, you know, frivolous salary increases for the LAPD. I mean, you know, it's just, you know, it's so fiscally irresponsible. I mean, you wouldn't even be in this mess if you weren't, you know. I mean, let's, if you're going to get in a deficit, be in a deficit for the right reasons, not the wrong reasons. I mean, it's good here at least doing some, I mean, I did see at least Paul was downgraded to Fritos instead of Doritos, so I hope that saves some money. But, but yeah. Yeah, let's, let's, let's take away the, let's negotiate to remove those salary increases and let's stop eliminating positions.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Kwan, did you want to speak on this item? Okay. Anybody else would like to speak on the amendment? Come on up.
Howdy.
Go ahead.
All right, so I think what the amendment's really missing is language that protects people's jobs. I don't understand how you can decide all these people are basically unnecessary because there's, because their jobs are vacant. We don't, you know, you guys never say, "Oh, look, we're missing all these positions in the police department. I guess we don't need them. Don't worry about it." So, you know, we don't hear that ever. So another, another thing about these jobs is it's one of the few avenues that people in Los Angeles have at getting like any semblance of a normal life that was promised to them by the American dream, which has been kind of thrown away. So when you scrap all these people from the city departments, you're really, you're really just increasing poverty because all those people that have been working for the city for however long, you think they're going to just fit, just slip right into a regular job somewhere else? Like, they have a very specialized set of skills, and in this job market, it's going to be hard for them to just get up and move, and they're really going to have a lot of trouble with that. So I think you really need to put more, like, essential something in there for them.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kwan, on the amendment?
Yeah, I just want to speak in support of Councilmember Hernandez's amendment. And we got to stop the Blue Lives Matter first budgeting. Looking at you. Why do they get through first and we only get panicky about the budget crisis when we're looking at other people in the city family? And just the whole budget process here is so broken. You have preserved what Nury Martinez left us. Last year, we had an amendment. A bunch of members voted for it, trying to reallocate money from one of the little helicopters. Where did that, where did that go? It was referred to committee with all of the other floor amendments. Has that ever been heard? Has that ever been heard? No, because the budget is driven by just a small number of people. Absurd.
Anybody else like to speak on the amendment? Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Price, we, I don't know if your mic was on, if you could just?
Yeah, I'm recusing myself from this item.
Okay.
Out of an abundance of caution because I am a landlord.
Very good. All right, thank you. So, you know, Ms. Lewis, I've warned you like three times. You're excluded from this meeting pursuant to Rule 12. We're not having, you know, call and response here. So please, please exit the chambers silently and quickly so that we can move on with our All right, let's go ahead and...
...with this after on this, but the purpose of this is not to cover the entire purple group, but as much as we can with the $21 million. That's what, that's, that's the language that, that's what the intent of what I'm trying to do.
An understatement, and I think that these are really important policy and procedure questions that need to be hammered out in the committee process. This was moved to urgently address one very narrow group of renters who are looking down a very specific deadline. I don't think there's any disagreement amongst any of us that we need to take action to protect that group, but I am concerned about moving this forward without adequate debate and analysis on this. And frankly, I don't have my questions to this answered, and I'm disappointed with how we've arrived at this point. We have known about this date for a year, and yet rather than having a deliberative conversation about it, we're left scrambling in the moment to try to address something that is essential. So I, I'm inclined to leave my proposed amendment the way it is because it's specific and narrowly tailored to address the narrow issue that was put in front of us today with this urgency, and that is that very specific group of... And that is that very specific group of tenants who owe pandemic-related arrears with a deadline to repay it or face evictions.
And, and, uh, Councilmember Blumenfield has been trying to push his button and then his name hasn't been coming up, I apologize. But just so that I can clarify, Councilmember Hernandez and Councilmember Park, what I thought I heard you to say was, the, the proposal on, on paragraph B. Next speaker?
Ah, four hours just sitting here, you know. Including an hour, like an hour of you talking about how you wanna, you know, hear from the valley. If you wanna hear from the valley, why don't you actually hear from the valley instead of doing an hour of a presentation talking about how you wanna hear from the valley? Um, and, um, you know. Then you spend like another hour just having every council member repeatedly ask the same six questions on like, like, none of you are even asking anything different. Just all of you had to ask the same couple questions. Just to waste our time, you know. It's just completely disrespectful. You're not actually, you know, it's what, what a show, I figure, well, maybe you'd put on a show. No, you're just doing your usual, you know, scrap that you do in downtown, except like 10 times worse. Um, I think I'm gonna do a, see if I can do a CPRA request to see how much money was spent on the overtime for the same couple of cops that are in the downtown city, all to drive out here to harass people at the, at Van Nuys. Kevin needs to go.
Next speaker? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You and I are gonna be meeting each other in my office in about six months under something called a deposition subpoena. On the 12th of January, one of your, uh, you removed, uh, Mr. Wayne Spindler. It appears one of your deputies that doesn't like me too much says I was Wayne Spindler and I was put into cuffs and everything. I've asked your office for the name of the deputy. You've not, and refused to give that to me. So we're gonna have to do something where it's gonna be a little bit more drastic. So I'm gonna spend my $435. You're gonna come to my office. You're gonna see co-councils on my end. And we're gonna have a fun game on why your deputy did that to me. I am not Wayne Spindler. And that, and your office position is, you don't care. So, I think I'm gonna have to spend the $435 and legally, lawfully, and civilly just wreck your fucking life. Thank you.
Next speaker?
Howdy. Um, uh, so really quickly, I have a message from Tom Materna from, uh, Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council. He, he would like for you guys to, uh, refer to Imelda for issues regarding the valley because she represents the community pretty well in his words. He says that, uh, he brought us here, uh, which we haven't been in a long time. So he would like for you guys to defer to her regarding issues, uh, involving the Van Nuys Airport. Now, for my words, um, it's kind of disrespectful how y'all are carrying yourselves in the middle of public comment after people waited hours to speak to you. Come on. That's a little disrespectful. I'm not saying for me. It's not for me. It's for those people. I don't own, I'm not a citizen. I don't own a home. I don't own a business. I come here speaking up for them. And they don't even like me. So at least do them the courtesy of listening to them. Really quickly, uh, Los Angeles Valley Gun Club. Los Angeles Valley Gun Club is now looking for members. We're very small. We're an email list. Uh, reach out to lavalliegc@gmail.com or lavalligungclub@gmail.com. Uh, beginners, non-owners are welcome. Come through.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Caller, you have one minute.
Hi, this is Ruth. Um, I listened to that long discussion and I heard Bob Blumenfield, I think, say something about, uh, not enough lifeboats. Like, these are people's lives and their homes that you're talking about. People that voted for you. You know, like people that are gonna be on the streets with me. Cause I'm not even in the life, I'm on an iceberg, you know? I'm outside plugged into a 12-volt car battery, just trying to get a word in. There was a council file CF 191020 written by Bonin and Marquise Harris Dawson for a lived experience board for homeless people in the city of Los Angeles. It was endorsed by LSA's Lived Experience Advisory Board and it's going to die this year if no one does anything about it. So please, Marquise Harris, Harris Dawson, please see to it that that body gets created and has, like, we have an opportunity to raise our grievances, which are many. People have been calling me because they don't have anyone to call.
Caller, your time has expired. Thank you. Next caller, please. Caller.
Caller, you have one minute.
Uh, good afternoon. Brock Landers, Los Angeles Private Investigator. Good choice for your last call. I had time to crack a case, bust a nut, and call back in. Walked back into Smoke and Scan to see Damon and Stinks. Bob, I've, I've heard you're scared of Mr. Harland. Why don't you just start wearing lipstick and a skirt? I'm sure when Jose gets moved into his new digs, he'll introduce you to the other snitches and bitches. Hold my pocket. Hugo, I reached out to you last weekend about issues and you still haven't, uh, responded back to me. How much human, are the human traffickers donating to your campaign? To have you ignore what's going on in your backyard? Did they promise to have someone watch your Lexis next time it breaks down? So you don't have to call the LAPD? It's hard for us to forget about Van Nuys. More crabs are in LA because of Van Nuys than have ever been caught on The Amazing Catch. Marquise, I'm still down for the charity boxing. Tom Cruise and David Mesticavich's dick still smell like tall.
Thank you very much. What's next before us, Madam Clerk?